There we are.
Hey, Ken.
Hi, Craig.
Chad.
Hey, Craig, how you doing?
Hi, Chad.
Hey, Ken. Well, good is... I don't know if Patty's on. But I think we're okay now. Okay, looks like Patty's trying to connect to the audio now.
Think Sisters of Mercy is expecting to go through in one shot tonight?
I think they would like to. The only thing with Sisters of Mercy that I'm aware of is their right-of-way dedication. I think they would prefer not to dedicate right-of-way, but we talked about this a little bit this morning, and I talked to Jim Hirsch and later to Tim Woodrow. And I think the consensus is that we would like to get we would like to get the right-of-way dedication particularly on Evans Road because if the Peters tract is ever developed, which I'm sure is going to happen before too long, we may wind up needing some signal modifications and intersection improvements out at Evans and Summietown. So having that extra right-of-way would be a big help.
Why are they doing this anyway? I can't remember what the...
The Sisters themselves own 47 acres, which is where the high school building is located. And what the Sisters would like to do is just keep the convent, but give the rest of the property to the high school.
Gotcha.
So that's the plan. There's no, there is no construction plan. It's going to continue to look exactly the way it does now, but they'll just be able to title the rest of the property over to the high school, and the Sisters will just keep the little corner where they have the convent.
I don't remember whether Summietown is a county road. So what would happen if Montgomery County wanted to build a four-lane highway there? What would happen to their building?
If Montgomery County decided to expand Summietown Pike, they would have to acquire right-of-way all the way along the corridor. There are other properties that would be a problem. I don't know that they would do it if they had to take a historic building down. The right-of-way, right now, if they were to dedicate a 40-foot half width on Summietown Pike, which is what shows on the plan, it puts them about four feet away from the old stone house on Summietown Pike.
But if it's dedicated right-of-way to the township, if the county came in...
Then the county would then, we would transfer the right-of-way to the county.
So would it look, would the township, is the township not doing their job by getting full right-of-way based on what it should be?
Well, the ultimate right-of-way designation is somewhat arbitrary. The ultimate right-of-way on Summietown Pike is laid out as 100 feet. In talking to Jim Hirsch, and I'm sure Chad's got some thoughts on it too, Jim didn't think that there would ever be a possibility they would need the entire 100 feet, but he certainly suspected they might need some additional right-of-way, and that's why he felt that getting the 40-foot half width would probably be enough. And I would agree with that.
Yeah, I do as well. I mean, 100 feet, that's a lot right-of-way. I mean, if you just, for simplistic sake, assume 12 feet per travel lane and maybe eight-foot shoulders, now 100 feet, that's a lot. So I think the 40-foot half width that Jim's recommending is appropriate.
And did Woodrow have any problems with Jim's recommendations on either street as it relates to the right-of-way?
Patty's trying to get me here. Patty? You're not getting, can you? How can it, let's see, how can I get you? Well, yeah, there's a whole slew of people in the waiting room, but I have an option here to admit all, or... Hang on a second. A second. Wait, did I? Wait, did I get you in?
Who's that way?
Right there's Patty. There's... But you're not getting any audio. Okay. Okay, give it a shot.
Hey, guys.
Hello.
Rich, will you hear?
Hey, Rich.
Hey, Rich.
Steve here.
Joel's here.
Danielle's here.
Perfect.
Who's missing?
Mike Christine is here.
Hey, Mike.
Hi.
We're missing
There's Craig.
And Rusty.
It looks like Rusty.
Oh, no.
He was dead.
Yeah, can't ignore that text I just sent you.
Wait, hang on. They're good. Okay. Patty, are you on? I don't think Patty was able to get in. Let me just, let me see something here.
Are you guys there?
Yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yay.
All right.
Holy mooks. Sorry, guys.
Who let Zadlo in?
Having technical difficulties.
Happens. There's Turski.
Gotta love technology.
Always an adventure.
Is everybody in here except for... Is everybody here from the board? Because I didn't let anybody else in yet.
Oh, I think a couple snuck in on you.
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Zadlo.
Who's that guy?
How did he get a link?
Thank you, Craig.
Duly noted. Well, I'm all right with getting started if you want to let everyone else in.
I think everybody's in, Craig.
Good, everybody's in except, let's see. Johan is here. I'm going to put Joe on even though he's here for the next application, but give him something to do, he can watch this one.
Okay.
I think we're ready.
All right.
Late?
So, welcome to the September 16th meeting. First order of business is to review the minutes from August 19th and approve those minutes. Anyone had a chance to review those?
I did, they look good to me.
Yep.
Does that sound like a motion?
The one who's got started off, though. Are you good with this mic?
I'm good. Move to approve the minutes.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. First order of business, Sisters of Mercy, 1345 Summietown Pike.
That would be me.
We have Joe Zadlo and Bob Jordan here, and I think Ann Pittenger is here for the Sisters as well.
Yes, she should be.
Okay.
Thank you.
Maybe Bob can... If we can let Bob share the screen, maybe he can put the plan up there.
I can do that.
Hang on. There we go.
All right, touch the overall sheet, Joe.
Yes, sorry.
Joe, you want to explain what we're doing here?
Yeah, I think everybody's familiar with this subject property. It's the 47-acre parcel on which is the girls' high school on Summietown Pike and Evans Road. Evans Road is across the top of the sheet, Summietown Pike is down the left-hand side. And we're here not for any physical changes or use changes in the property, but we're here because the Sisters of Mercy are undergoing a organizational restructuring. And under this restructuring, the responsibility or the property of the various sections is being turned over to those sections. Right now, the Sisters owns the property and the high school is, for all intents and purposes, a tenant. Also on the property is the convent right at the intersection, and that is the piece of property that the Sisters do not want to turn over to the high school. That's still their property and their use. You may have noticed that we were to the zoning hearing board because since these properties were kind of a share use, improvements had gone in, which didn't respect property lines that didn't exist. And as a result, there were zoning irregularities for which we had to get a variance and we successfully got those variances. That kind of brings us to, unless there are any questions on that, that kind of brings us to the Township Engineers Review Letter. And I have little, I think very little to discuss with you. On page, if you all have that review letter, on page three, if you would make note of items eight, nine, 11, and 12, we respectfully request a waiver from those four items.
Joe.
Review comment.
Not all of us have a copy of that. Could you just outline briefly what those points are?
Yes. Number eight has to do with the ultimate right-of-way widths on Summietown Pike and Evans Road. And there was some conversation and exchange, I understand, at the Building and Zoning Committee today, and I think we have that worked out. Ken, is that true or hopefully it's true?
Well, what was discussed, we had a staff meeting. The Building and Zoning Committee was Monday night. We had a staff meeting this morning. And at the staff meeting, we discussed the idea of the ultimate right-of-way, how much of that ultimate right-of-way we might conceivably use in the future or the county might use if they were ever to expand Summietown Pike. It currently shows on the plan as a 40-foot half width or an 80-foot ultimate right-of-way. The township ordinances designate a 100-foot ultimate right-of-way, which would be a 50-foot half width. That would place the ultimate right-of-way into the building itself, into the old stone house. The discussion this morning was that we do feel we need the right-of-way for future improvements along Summietown Pike, but that the 40-foot, as shown on the plan, would be an adequate right-of-way. There's no need to acquire the full 50-foot half width that the ordinance would require. So I think the staff would support a waiver to reduce the ultimate right-of-way from 50-foot half width to a 40-foot half width.
That's great because it, having the ultimate right-of-way go through the house is an unneeded complication.
So Joe, you're okay with that?
Yes.
So, so right now, the house must be pretty close to the curb, is that right?
The house is about 20 feet from the cartway. The additional ultimate right-of-way that would be acquired to achieve the 40-foot half width would give us about 15 feet, and it would leave a little over four feet remaining between the new ultimate right-of-way line and the house itself.
Okay, so this plan does not, there's no anticipation of a change in the walls of the house.
No.
Yeah.
Okay.
Hey, Ken, was this discussed at the B&amp;Z meeting on Monday?
This particular item was not discussed, this particular issue of the ultimate right-of-way. This came up after the B&amp;Z meeting, but it was discussed at a staff meeting this morning.
So the second part of this, so the ultimate right-of-way on Summietown Pike, it only matters if the county decided that they want to widen that road. So this is somewhat theoretical discussion. Chad, you want to explain how much?
The other change, the other reason we might need that right-of-way besides the county widening the entire corridor would be if there were improvements to the intersection at Summietown and Evans. We may need right-of-way in order to affect an improvement to that intersection.
That's, I'm talking, I was kidding.
What about Evans Road and that right-of-way?
Evans Road is a state road, and the, as a practical matter of what you're saying, Craig, is true that although we will offer them dedication, neither the county or the state are going to accept that land for dedication. But in the event there are some improvements to be made in the future, the fact that we offered it will eliminate any necessity to go through any gyrations to do the improvements in the future.
Okay, I'm sorry, Joe, I don't really understand what you mean by dedication, the county and the state accepting dedication. Can you help me out with that?
Yeah, the dedication means that they would accept a deed to the property, and they would own the property. And it's not their, it's not their practice to own that additional land on almost any road.
Sure, okay, so nobody wants that.
So, Ken, you think that whatever the town is going to do and whatever the county might do on Summietown Pike, there's sufficient space? And if there's not sufficient space, then what would happen in that situation? They'd have to take property by eminent domain or something like that?
If, in the very unlikely event that they needed more right-of-way, they would have to acquire it by eminent domain, yes.
Okay.
A 50-foot ultimate right-of-way is commensurate with a four-lane highway, four-lane divided highway.
Understood. So, Joe, for Evans Road, why the 30-foot instead of 40-foot?
It's again a case where we have driveway improvements on the property, and by taking it into 40-foot, the entire circular driveway goes into the ultimate right-of-way.
Okay. I mean, if we, if there was ever any intersection improvements, it's likely that that might risk anyway?
Yes. Yeah, if you improve the intersection even with 30 feet, it's at risk. But we would prefer the 30 feet.
So Chad and Ken, what's the township's opinion on that subject?
Well, I'm not sure that Chad had a chance to weigh in on this, whether he's had a chance to look at this. But what do you think, Chad, as far as future improvements?
Yeah, we didn't do an official review of this plan because it was just a lot line change. But in terms of, from a general perspective, the intersection of Summietown and Evans, Evans would be considered the secondary road at the intersection. By that, I mean it doesn't carry quite as heavy volume. Summietown Pike, the degree of improvements along Evans Road that would be needed down the road is likely to be less than what you would need on Summietown Road, just lower traffic volumes. But I can't recall what the ordinance requirement is for Evans Road.
Ordinance requirement is an 80-foot right-of-way, 40-foot half width. And they're showing a 30-foot half width, which would be, it looks like it would give us enough room to get another lane in, which would, which is, would be my biggest concern, would be if Peters is developed and we improve that intersection, we would want to be able to provide a designated left-turn lane.
Correct. And that track's been before us before.
Peters was before us for rezoning.
Right.
It's not been in for land development, but I suspect it will be before too long.
So do we want to have the vision to deal with this now?
If I could point something out, the 202 project, which, a section of which is now underway, when the previous section was done out to 63, the state improved this intersection commensurate with their traffic studies for the widening of Route 202. So there has been improvement to the intersection in the recent past. That's not to say, I'm not disputing at all what Ken is saying, but I think it is important to note that it's not an intersection which hasn't had any attention paid to it.
And I'll just add to what I was talking about previously, that approach of Evans Road, the greatest extent of improvements that I could ever see on that approach of the intersection with separate left-through and right-turn lane on Evans Road approaching Summietown and the existing one-receiving lane northbound Evans Road traffic. So in essence, actually, the greatest extent of improvements that I think we would envision there would be, you know, four travel lanes, which would be to accommodate turning lanes at the intersection. So that 30-foot half width, which, you know, if you take account the ultimate right-of-way across the entire intersection, which would be 60 feet, that should be enough width to accommodate that level of improvement somewhere down the road if it's needed.
And again, if it needed to be more, theoretically, someone could come in and grab the extra 10 feet.
Correct. Yeah, then you would go through a right-of-way acquisition process or anything additional.
Okay.
Okay, let me go to the second one, number nine. Number nine cites a code requirement that says that Evans Road is required to be a minimum of 26 feet wide, and it is not 26 feet wide. But the review letter says that since there are no improvements related to the proposed subdivision, that the engineer would support a waiver from that requirement. And we appreciate the support.
So are there plans beyond, so the purpose of the subdivision is just to, at least is, and correct me if I'm wrong, the purpose of the subdivision is to ensure that the Sisters keep ownership of Lot 1 and Lot 2? What would happen with Lot 2?
Lot 2 goes under the ownership of the high school.
And there's no, I mean, the plan is just to clean up what already exists and no, I mean, there's no...
It's...
No plans for Lot 1 because...
No, there's no change, there's no physical change, there's no use change. The property will continue just as it is. This is just a line on the ground that you won't even be able to see.
This is just essentially housekeeping.
I'm sorry, essentially what?
Just basically housekeeping to clean up, to clean up what is working in practice?
To, it's a part of the reorganization plan that the Sisters of Mercy are undergoing, where they are turning over the responsibility of the land to the Division of the Sisters of Mercy that are using the land. So this is not specific to Lower Duennet, it's happening at their other locations as well.
Understood. Before we go any further, I got a question because this is going to be a recurring theme, I have a feeling. So, and I guess this is for Ken. Let's say we go through this. Let's say we go through this, we have five different waivers that we're going to support because it's basically, as, as Joe described, a lot line change with, with no physical changes. At what point would we look at this differently? I mean, I, I guess the true land development where either the buildings are coming down or they're going to put a new building in that space. I just want to make sure that if we support all these waivers, at what point is there a trigger for these waivers to be back on the table?
I think a future, a future land development would, would be the trigger and it would be then a matter of the planning commission and the board of supervisors weighing the impact of the land development and whether, whether it merits the, the imposition of these requirements as opposed to granting waivers again in the future. But I think it would have to be reevaluated.
The granting of the waiver now doesn't waive our right to not grant the waiver later. It's a lot of waivers in there, but is that right, Ken?
That's, if, if the property comes before you as the land development in the future, then you can reevaluate any waivers that had previously been granted. It essentially wipes the slate clean.
Okay, that's what I thought. It also goes with respect to these road routes. If we plan to develop or widen the road, even though we grant a waiver, they're going to come back to everyone, just not going to approach this particular track, correct?
Correct, that's true.
Okay, number three has to do with street trees. And the township engineer is again willing to support the waiver because there are no improvements, there's no construction, there's, there's not anything happening. It's all good, it's going to stay the way it is. And then I thank the engineer for supporting the waiver.
Now, did you actually ask for, or did Woodrow actually ask for all these waivers? Or are we pointing them out to you?
No, I mean, I just brought it up in the letter just because there are no improvements at all. Some of the comments, I added a caveat at the end, basically stating, you know, conditioned upon the applicant. If any other future improvements happened, you know, we might go after this. You know, any other land developments in the future, we would certainly take a different look at this.
So, so, but all the things that we're talking about now that are technical waivers that we either support or don't support, the applicant still has to make a list of all those waivers and put them on, on the drawings?
Correct.
Yes, I, I think the last waiver is a good example of, of what was just discussed. It's a waiver for a pedestrian trail. And it's been suggested that we put a note on the plan that it would be waived for this application, but we would, on the plan, commit to addressing pedestrian trails with any future development. And we agree with putting that note on the plan with the possible exception of saying any future substantial improvements, we, we wouldn't want to be faced with spending five times as much for a trail than we would for the actual improvement.
We could certainly add a note similar to that with regard to all of these, if we need to.
Great. So that's it, we will comply with everything else and would like very much to have your favorable recommendation.
All right, so let's see. Nothing else in here that we need to talk about. So you're going to comply with all these easement, all this easement, which?
Everything.
Okay.
Um, if I might jump in real quick, I think 14, you might need a waiver from curbing.
Oh yeah, I'm sorry, I missed that one, thank you. Yes.
Okay.
No curbing on either, on either road, we didn't, we didn't feel the need to add it. But if, if any additional improvements, same as before, come through, we would certainly take a different look at this.
And again, if it's, if we're allowing land for improvement of an intersection, putting in curb now at the intersection would be detrimental to expanding the intersection in the future.
The, you saw Al Comley's comments about making sure that the buildings have signage on them?
The, the two properties already have two different addresses. The convent's mail goes to the convent and we informed, well, actually informed Ken of that and I'm sure he informed Al, so yes, that's already taken care of.
It is.
So just a quick question, do you know the age of the obstruction that is?
I do not. And do you know the age of the convent?
There are approximately three additions to it. And I believe the oldest does date back to the late 1800s.
So it doesn't fall under any historical preservation?
Well, it's eligible for historic designation, but we're not making any changes, additions, remodeling or anything else. So it's, it's not, it's not really pertinent.
I have a question for Ken.
Yes.
Ken, if this is a simple lot, if this is a simple lot line change, why are we, why are the waivers being introduced?
Because it creates a new lot. They're creating a lot that never, that didn't exist before. So it's a, it's a minor subdivision, it's, it's not just a lot line change.
So it's more, it's more than a simple housekeeping issue?
Correct.
Does anyone else have any more comments? So if, I understand everything we've been through and if the planning commission is accepting, I think the, the recommendation would read, planning commission recommends accepting the 40-foot half width ultimate right of way in lieu of 50-foot on Summietown Pike. Planning commission is accepting of the 30-foot half width right of way, right of way on Evans in lieu of 40 feet. I would add, both conditions are subject to further review from Chad, not under duress, just in case he, in retrospect, tomorrow or soon thereafter sees something that might change that thought process.
Is that called a hanging Chad?
Yeah, so that's, that's our hanging Chad for the recommendation. Support a waiver request for 26-foot minimum cartway on Evans. Support waiver request for street trees. Support waiver for no paved trail for this application. Support waiver for no curbs. And then, you know, I, I guess depending on what, how Ed wants to word it, applicant is aware that any future development could change the township's position on any of these waivers in the future. I don't know if that's any better than how you guys were planning on handling it. And then I guess finally the applicant has to put all these waivers on the drawings.
I would like to make a motion.
I certainly agree with it.
I would like to make a motion based on the way you described it Craig, to go ahead and accept.
Second.
I'd say second.
Before we vote, does, does Ed or Ken have anything to add or comment based on what the recommendation was?
No, not at all. I think, I think that I can, I can agree with what was suggested.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you guys. I think you're one for one.
Thank you.
Your approval.
Nice to see you again.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it. So do the Sisters of Mercy.
Yep. All right, so next order of business is 301 Norristown Road.
This is, this is the Gwinnett Estates property and Johanna is here for Gwinnett Estates or for ACTS. The, the property went to the zoning hearing board and received approval. The, the intent is to build a skilled nursing facility and, and add some parking, all of which required some relief from the zoning hearing board, that was granted. And now they're coming in with their land development application. We just wanted to give Joe an opportunity to explain to the planning commission what's intended here. And, and then I, I think, I don't, I don't think he intended to get into a long discussion about any of the review comments, more, it was more an, an offer of, an explanation of what's happening out here and then an offer to come back in a couple of months or in a month with, with responses and revised plans based on the reviews. Joe, you're up.
Good, good evening. Thank you for the introduction. Johanna from Chambers Associates, President of Chambers Associates. And we have submitted this land development application for a standalone skilled nursing building to be added to the site. It's located behind the homeowner property and in front of the existing apartments for the site. It would be close to the northerly border backing up to the adjoining golf club. And it would utilize the existing access roads that are in place with the addition of some parking around the new building. Utilities would access improvements in Tennis Avenue. And we would add an emergency access road along that northerly property line to the site. We got comments from the fire marshal that we're in the process of responding to. And we have the engineer's letter, but like Ken, Ken said, we have to go through that with our client and review the responses to that. So our intent following this presentation is to work through those comments and come back to the planning commission next month.
Joe, in the, in the course of doing this skilled nursing facility, are you required to get community input, feedback from the general community? Or is that, is that what we, is that our role here?
You mean from surrounding properties?
Yeah.
Yeah, yes, that's part of this process. It's, it's fairly lengthy, it's much different than the application you just looked at. It, it requires a sign off from Williams Pipeline because they have a pipeline that goes through our property. And we have submitted plans to them for review. And it requires a NPDS permit from the County Conservation District. That will be submitted in a few weeks. We have agreements that we need to work out with the sewer authority for the additional sewer and agreements for the, with the water company to provide service to the building. As, as well as, you know, the, the review and approval of the, the township.
Okay.
So our goal, our goal is to get those permits and approvals over the rest of this year with an expectation to start construction sometime next spring.
How many beds are you looking at, Joe?
There's 40 beds. It's two stories, two stories with 40 beds. And the reason we went to the zoning hearing board is the ordinance doesn't specifically address the skilled care nursing in this district. So we needed an interpretation on how to count the beds and the beds are being counted as independent units. So we increased the density from 200, 201 to 211.
Correct.
There was no skilled care operation at this facility currently, correct?
That is correct, right.
Does, anyone want to show us the drawings and just take us a walk?
I could, let me get some photos up for you here. So I'll show you this, which is an aerial. So in the middle of the screen, you'll see the existing complex. To the top of the screen is Norristown Road. Top left is the intersection of Tennis Avenue and Norristown Road. On Norristown Road is the main entrance to the facility. And then as to come into the facility, you need to come to the gatehouse to be allowed to access the site. And then there's a second independent gate for the driveway that serves the back of the property. So everybody can see this?
Yeah.
Okay, so this road that's in the middle of the site right now goes back to the apartments that were added in 2004. And just to the left of those, between those and the homeowner house, which is here, is where the new building will go.
Where, where is that again? I, I apologize. The, the, the existing building was like a, it's a barn right up on Tennis Avenue?
That is correct. That, that's typically referred to as the homeowner house.
And there's pickleball courts right behind that?
Yeah, this, this photo is obviously before the pickleball courts were built. But yes, there's pickleball courts between the, the driveway and the homeowner house.
And so the proposed building will be up against the property line which abuts the golf course?
Yeah, yes, I, I can flip to a, a rendered site plan that'll be a little easier to read. So let me, let me do that. Okay, these, these plans have different orientations. So on, on this drawing, to the right side of the screen is Tennis Avenue and to the top of the screen is the golf course. And you can see the homeowner house and the pickleball courts that have been constructed.
And where is the, where's the additional impervious surface that you plan to put in for the parking?
So the, this, the brown elongated building is, is the new skilled nursing.
Right.
And on this plan, the, I'll call it the lighter gray is some of the existing driveway. And then we have a new driveway that goes around the building to the park, existing parking area behind the building G. And then since we're cutting off that access that goes to building G, we have a second driveway that comes off and feeds the parking lot to get back to building G. So we have.
The proposed driveway, that, towards the now, which, so behind the building and in front of the building, there's going to be additional impervious surface?
That is correct, yes. And then, and then what we're doing, we have a surface basin that's parallel to the property line with the country club. So that will be replaced with an underground storm sewer management system. And then it doesn't show on here, but in the new parking area in front of the building, there's another underground. there's another underground infiltration system that we'll use to meet our BMP requirements. That system will tie into the other system, and everything will continue to discharge the same outlet of the existing basin.
I generally know the area, and it's the, I guess, the one concern I would have, and I've seen that there's some significant stormwater management plans. So you've obviously considered it, but runoff onto the adjacent property could cause problems with their, with the golf course. But it seems like you have considered that.
Well, we're not changing, we're not changing the runoff to the golf course. It will continue to discharge at the same point. I will say that because of the newer regulations, we have a, we have a responsibility to control the volume of water for the two-year storm and under. So, you know, I'll call it the storm that you get on a more regular basis, we're not allowed to let any additional volume off of our site from this project area. So there will be some improvement as far as reduction in stormwater.
Right, but you see at the top of the screen that you have now where it says proposed driveway? What, that now is just grass?
That right now is grass. It's actually part of the existing detention basin, which is a surface basin.
Right, so that's, and above that is the golf course, right? So if you're adding impervious surface, the water has to go somewhere.
Right, so underneath the paving of the proposed driveway, there are a series of 24-inch diameter pipes that will be used to collect the excess water during the stormwater and let it slowly release at the end of that piping system back into the small portion of the basin that would remain, and then out through the existing outlet from the site. So there won't be any, there won't be any surface water that leaves these paved areas and goes onto the golf course.
It'll continue to flow into the existing basin and out the normal course from there? That's what you're saying?
That is correct, yes.
Okay.
Joe, have you had any conversation with people at the golf course?
I have not, no. We can certainly do that. I, you know, there's multiple steps here. And so my, I have no objection to doing that. What I would like to do is get the application into the Conservation District and get their input on the design. And then I'll have the, you're the engineer's input and their input, and then I can talk to them about getting their input. And we can integrate all those comments together when we resubmit the plans.
So Joe, you said this went to the zoning board?
It went to the zoning board in June.
And they approved it, I assume?
Yeah, they approved it for some of these parking spaces to be located in the 75-foot setback from the adjoining property line and from the, I think it was 100-foot setback from Tennis Avenue. And they approved the additional density to go from 201 to 211 units.
So at that, at that hearing, the neighbors were invited to attend. So there, it's not the first time, they've heard, yeah. Was anybody present at that meeting from across the street from Tennis Avenue or from the country club?
No.
But they weren't notified?
Yeah, I believe there's a notification that goes out. I don't know if it's 500 feet or, you know, from the site.
Yeah, it's 500 feet around the property.
Right.
So Patty, the people on Tennis, the neighbors on Tennis Avenue were notified as well as-
Yeah, Steve, I don't have the file, but yeah, I could look tomorrow to see who was notified. Yeah.
Okay, all I'm saying is like, this shouldn't be the first time they hear about it.
Is the proposed emergency access road, that's now just grass as well?
Yes, that was an existing driveway. And as part of the previous approvals, we were required to remove that existing driveway. There is a paved area behind the homeowner house that's used, you know, for access parking or, you know, whatever they're doing at the homeowner house. So we would basically reopen that road. It would be gated for the fire company, but it would provide direct access to this building in the back part of the site.
I would share Joe's, I guess, suggestion of speaking with the country club sooner rather than later to avoid what could be problems for everyone down the line. And I say that only because managing water onto any golf course is critical. And if they're going to get more than they bargained for because you're adding either the emergency road and the additional driveway there behind, behind that, that, that's just, that's something that I'm sure they're going to want to at least have some knowledge of before the fact. And to Steve's point as well, I'm sure they got notice, but there's getting notice, and then there's sort of having the conversation, knocking on the door, and just maybe-
I don't see any problem with doing that at all. ACTS has a golf outing each year. A few years ago, they had their golf outing there. So, you know, there's no problem with contacting them and reviewing this with them.
Yeah, I just think that might, you know, good neighbors and all.
I agree, I agree with Joel and Mike. And Joe, as well, this, all this stuff should be, you know, show them the plans, work out their concerns, you know, before it gets to, you know, planning commission. That would be a big help.
Yeah. I suspect they're going to want to have some more buffer with trees, you know, I mean, this is, and I know the area a little bit, so it's-
Is there an existing walk-in trail on the site, Joe?
Yes, there is.
Can you pull that up?
Well, yes. So if you-
It's right along Tennis Avenue, I think, right?
Well, it's, it was a stone path back when we got the approval in 2004. That was the standard for the trails in the township. It's the entire length of Tennis Avenue out to Norristown Road. Let me, let me flip back to the, let me flip back to the aerial, because I think I'll show-
I think it goes along Norristown Road over the little bridge.
Right, so, so it goes the entire length of Norristown Road. Yeah, okay, we can see it. So up at the top of the screen?
Okay.
All right, so it goes down there. And I guess last year or two years ago, we finished it, we couldn't finish the road because the state was, and the adjoining property was doing a new signal intersection for their driveway. And so when that work was finished, we went and got the DEP permits that were required to cross the little drainage ditch that comes underneath Norristown Road. So we have a small bridge, and the driveway goes, the trail was completed from the sewage treatment plant to the edge of our property. So it's the entire length of both roads.
Got you.
And then they have some internal, you know, internal walkways, too.
Okay, if no one else has any other comments, Joe, the only thing I would say is, plans, the other day, and we had our B&amp;Z meeting on Monday. I looked at the plans, and I looked at the review letters, and I'm like, well, they don't expect a whole lot out of us. This is going to be a pretty long meeting if they do.
Had the same thought.
We do not, we have already dedicated the right-of-ways. So the issue you talked about in the last application's already been taken care of.
Letters are pretty lengthy, and there's probably some doozies in there that we're going to end up having to talk about. So all I ask is that you can come to the, you can come to the planning commission twice, unprepared, or once, very prepared. And if you try to come too early in October, and these review letters are, a lot of will complies, but we haven't changed the drawings, and we're still working on this, and we're trying to figure all this stuff out, I think we're going to have a hard time. This is a, this is a pretty complicated application, and we want to feel pretty good about it before we send it along to the supervisors.
That's, that's fine. So our next step is to go through some of these comments with the township engineer to make sure we understand them, and we understand what we need to do. As far as you'd like to see revised plans before you took action on this, that's correct?
Yeah, and frankly, I'd like to see revised review letters.
I don't have an objection to that. We have, we have, like I said, we have to deal with Williams Transco, which is not going to be a quick process. We have to deal with the Conservation District and the NPDS review process, which is at least a four- to six-month cycle with them. So there's, that's not going to adversely impact our project schedule to take the time to revise the plans and get a new review.
Okay. Speaking of the gas line, this has come up from time to time where we have people that are applicants that are, that need permission to actually do something, but they show that something on the plan. And there's a little bit of a hesitation on our part to say, okay, well, it's okay to show that, but we'll take it back if you don't get approval. I mean, granted, you're not trying to put a building on that, so it's a little bit easier, but you are going to develop something on top of that easement. Again, not that it's a huge deal, and I don't want to hold up the whole plan as a result of it, but technically, you know, we really shouldn't be letting you show something like that, that you don't have approval from the person granting the easement. You know what I'm talking about?
I expect to have correspondence from them that will be submitted to the township before we come back to you for approval.
Okay. All right.
I also suggest that since we have this review letter of September 11th, it helps us if we know what you've agreed to at the next meeting just by putting agreed in front of all of the items listed. And if that said all agreed, it would make our meeting very short, then.
That's my goal.
Okay.
I will, I will write, I will write a response letter, but what I'm hearing is that it would be your preference to have a new letter that would be substantially smaller than this letter with a list of the items that we would want waivers from, because we're going to talk about waivers of road winding and stuff like that along Tennis and Norristown Road. Norristown Road is already, you know, pretty much a highway. So we will come back, we will have a list of the waivers that we will have discussed with the engineer, and hopefully a shorter letter with a will comply.
And also your feedback from your meeting with all your crew.
And that's, yes, we'll provide that.
Okay. All right, great. Well, I think this is a good first step, and, you know, we'll certainly do our part. Any other things for Gwinnett Estates? I don't think we have anything else on the agenda.
No, we don't, that's it.
Okay, Joe, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Does anyone have anything else they want to talk about, or we doing this meeting in 50 minutes?
A record these days.
Yeah. Motion to adjourn? Yeah, well, you can tell my patience for these three-hour meetings has gone down. That's why I gave Joe that speech. No, we're not doing that stuff anymore. That's too much. All right, well, thank you, everyone. And, you know, we'll see you.
I have one question. Is there any way we could get copies, hard copies of the ones? It's just really so hard to try and look at these drawings when they're emailed, and they're turned sideways. So you got to like lay down and-
Yeah, do you guys want, you guys, when I get the revised plans, I can just give you paper copies?
I would prefer a paper copy, yes.
You want paper copies of the entire plan? Because we're looking at a 24-sheet plan. We've got several trees that'll come down to do that.
I don't, I don't need them, I can tell you that. I'll take it electronically.
Same here.
I like the plans only because there's a lot of stuff on there, and-
No, I understand, Rich, I know you do, because you tend to go through everything on the plan, which is great, but not everybody does that.
Hit a bigger screen, Rich.
You know, I got a larger laptop, and it was so unwielding, I went back to the 15-inch. So I can't do the screen thing with drawings. It's just-
So is there anybody else besides Rich that would like paper copies?
Joel would.
Joel, okay. All right, that's no problem. I'll let you guys know when I got the revised plans and when, you know, I can put them down in the vestibule area if you guys want to swing by and pick them up.
Yeah, I can stop by and do that if you'll do that. That's fine.
Yeah.
Okay, yeah, that's fine. I'll let you guys know.
Anytime, Patty, thanks.
Okay, good. No problem.
All right. Have a good night, everyone.
Great.
Take care.
Yeah, thanks, guys.